It's 10 o'clock, we're meeting in the first, second floor courtroom of the Hood County Courthouse at 100 East Pearl, and the meeting is called to order. Leonard, would you do the invocation, please?
I will. Let's pray. Precious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you so much for what you do for us on this day. Give us our shortcomings, trust the knowledge, do the county's business, be with the boys and the girls that's in the service, fighting for us to keep us safe where we can meet this way. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Join me, please, to pledge the flag of our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one nation under God, one and individual.
Bob, we have special presentations today.
Judge Commissioners, due to the fact that we did not have a day court in December, we're going to give out December awards at this point in time. The first is for Cindy Lincoln in the library for 15 years of service. The second is for Judge Martin Castillo, again, for 15 years of service with the county.
Thank you. Martin, did you start when you were 12 or something?
Yeah.
That it, Bob? No? Okay.
This is one of our unusual courts in the fact that every person that we're going to give awards to has been here in the county at least 10 years or more. This is highly unusual. The first person to get an award is Chad Jordan, one of our constables, and this is a 15-year award.
Thank you, sir.
The second is for another constable, Dwayne Hart, with 15 years of service. Next person is our county attorney, Kelton Connor, with 15 years of service.
Kelton, congratulations.
Thank you.
The next is for Wesley Nelson, who works in road ops, and it is a 10-year award. And last but not least, Janet Vickers, who works in our dispatch area. Janet worked late last night, so she's not going to be able to be here, but she has 10 years with the county. I'll give this to the sheriff, and he can get that to her.
Okay, the next item is, does anyone wish to, any citizen wish to make a comment about anything on the agenda? If so, the sheriff has a form to fill out. Anyone? Thank you, Roger. The consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Hearing no comment, Judge. I'm motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to approve the consent agenda. Any further comment? Any discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is subdivision roads and plats. Do you have anything, Don?
Yes, sir. We ask that you open a public hearing to consider the appropriate action for the replat of Lot 1944R. It consists of combining lots 1943 and 1944, which creates a 1 and 2 tenths acre lot. The plat is located in the water quality district in precinct number two. We have received a letter from the homeowners association of the complantation showing no objection to this replat.
Okay, when you want to set that public hearing?
No, sir. This is the public hearing.
Now, this is it. Okay, then, a public hearing is now open to consider and take appropriate action for the replats of Lot 1944R complantation, Unit 3. Anyone wish to make comments on this? Public hearing is now open. One more chance. No? Okay, then the public hearing is closed.
Judge, the only comment I would make on this is that this is a lot that's being combined with a lot that is basically not large enough for a house, and it involves a small right-of-way tract that goes to the lake for the purposes of a dock because it's up on that court, what's it called?
Esplanade.
Esplanade Court, which is the one under the bridge by the marina. So, there are no objections to the reshaping of this lot.
Okay, is there a motion to do that, then?
Yes, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Rohn, seconded by Commissioner Berry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action for the replat of Lot 250R Block 1, Bentwater, on Lake Granbury.
Judge Cochran, staff recommend setting a public hearing for the February 28th Commissioners' Court meeting.
Go move.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton, to set a public hearing and take appropriate action for the replat of Lot 250R Block 1, Bentwater. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Budget and finance.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. There is a fund, it's a separate fund designated as 557. This is the district attorney's forfeiture fund, it's his discretionary money. He tells me he wants to increase the budget of his own funds by $12,000, which he wants to spend out of his previous fund balance and move that into his line for investigations. I believe that is within his prerogative, so we wanted to let you know about that. The treasurer does have custody of those funds on his behalf. I recommend this for your approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve this budget line item for the district attorney's discretionary fund.
Go move.
A motion made by Commissioner Simpson, the second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion on this item? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, Stan.
Judge Commissioners, the total bills that I have to present to you today for your consideration come to $3,393,183.89. That's the first list that I sent to you on last Thursday, plus the additional $12,500, which would be for the quarterly subsidy distribution to the Economic Development Corporation. Of course, the largest item is for the treasurer's payment of principal and interest payments are scheduled debt maturities on long-term debt for the county. That comes to $2,587,398. There are internal budgeted transfers that total $267,424. There is a payment to the Acton Municipal Utilities District of $141,353. That's for the AMUD sewer grant, and that money has already been received. It is on deposit with the treasurer to cover that reimbursement. The treasurer's payments to the state comptroller for the quarterly remittance of fees collected is $122,868.8 to Comdata. For fuel card purchases, the amount is $38,827.82. For attorneys, court reporters, and visiting judges, the amount is $47,142, and that's roughly twice what it would normally be. As you know, it's been reported in the district court, there was a plea entered and accepted for the capital murder trial, and although there were some unusual expenses related to that, it also avoided several weeks of anticipated trial in that case, which will likely save the county a great deal of money on that expense. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have on any of the other items, but I recommend these for your approval, and I have provided payment warrants for each item on the list.
Move, we ratify paying the bills.
Second.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to ratify paying the bills. Any further discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, we're down to miscellaneous. Item C will be consider and take appropriate action to accept reports from department heads, and the first one is James from Environmental Health.
Judge Commissioners, I appreciate you letting me come here and give an annual report for the 2011 fiscal year. I did do a PowerPoint. I can go through this as quickly as you would like. It should take five to 10 minutes. There are some slides on this PowerPoint that could be a little bit graphic as to some of the things that we handle out in the field. If need be, I can skip past those, but, again, thank you for letting me be here. The first slide is simply my staff, of course, myself, and my office manager, Sherry View, Alan Harden, an investigator, Sam Hall, who recently came over as an investigator, and Amber Wigington is my part-time clerk. Also, Warren Stallins, which I forgot to put on here, is working at our Citizens' Collection Station. Some of the functions of the department are onsite sewage facility permitting. We also handle complaints related to those. We investigate public health nuisances for both solid waste and water, public nuisances, which is dilapidated structures and the such. We offer to the public water well testing for both bacteria and chemistry type of analysis, and surface water sampling for coliform. Other functions are, we issue permits for private swimming pools as related to septic systems or onsite sewage facilities. We're responsible for the operation of the Citizens' Collection Station on behalf of the Commissioners' Court and you guys, as well as floodplain development permits. A few statistics for the year are, to preface the amounts, our onsite sewage facility permit fee or septic fee is $410 each, and we issued 185 permits for the 2011 year. Total revenue from that was $71,000, and number of complaints was 663, which was a 41% increase over the previous year. Notices of violations directly related to those investigations were 380. Types of septic systems permitted was the, typically in this county, from the top to the bottom, those are in order of the type that we permit the most. The aerobic systems with spray application, probably 50% of everything we permit are those types of systems. Next is conventional pipe and gravel, aerobic with drip irrigation, low pressure dosing, and soil substitution. This is just simply a picture of one of the inspections on a local business that we completed this previous year. That's a tank system, and a couple of my inspectors are there. That's the second part of that, the final inspection where it's completed, just to give you an idea of what some of the sites look like that we've been on. Types of complaints that we deal with in the field related to septic systems are failures of pipe and gravel septic systems, or those old conventional systems, usually due to hydraulic overloading, physical damage, maintenance problems, mechanical failures as related to pumps, aerators, or even alteration of mechanical parts, and of course, discharges of sewage and other wastewater to either the ground or the lake that would create a public health nuisance, as well as grain blackwater discharges. This is just a site of a pipe that had been cut underneath a home, and there was a discharge from the kitchen sink to the ground, which is a public health nuisance. This is just gray water discharged to a county road ditch. This is failure of a septic system, the old pipe and gravel tank, where it's just hydraulically overloaded and surfacing. This is an example of a mechanical part when it fails that it overflows out of the septic tank. And, of course, this is a little more graphic, it's just failure of a septic system. This is probably, this is one of the investigations that was unique for the year. We actually found a discharge via a pipe to a canal on the north end of the county. Moving on to the aerobic systems, we probably have between 5,000 and 6,000 of these aerobic systems in the ground, and every year, as a part of the state law, we maintain or track those systems and make sure that there are contracts for those systems to reduce the amount of public health nuisances. This previous year, we issued 1,360 notices of violation related to those, and 74 of those went to the JP Court. Typically, they start the fines at around $500 for violations. Most of those are corrected, some of those actually do end up getting paid, so. Public health nuisances in general related to solid waste or other discharges, we had 358 of those this previous year, which was a 14% increase, and that I've seen, I contribute that to the economy. Number of JP cases filed was 43, and again, that was typically a $500 fine. This is just an example of what we deal with out in the field. This is an accumulation of kitchen garbage in a trailer, where a lot of times, not in this case, but a lot of times in this economy, people are having a tough time paying for the service to get their garbage removed. This is another example of that, where it was simply deposited in their backyard. This is one other thing that we investigated, was an accumulation of brush in a business park. This can attract rodents, or it can be a fire hazard. Moving on to the Citizens' Collection Station. This facility, of course, opened in 2009, that the Commissioners' Court approved that budgeting and finance, as well as some grant money, and this is a summary of what we did in the 2011 year. This has reduced the amount of illegal dumping out on the county right-of-waste to some degree. In that year, we took in 638 tons of solid waste. That was a 7% increase over the 2010 year. 81 tons of metal was diverted from the landfill that we sold, and that goes back into the general fund. Mixed recycling, we took in 300 cubic yards, which was a 53% increase over the previous year. We took in 1,800 tires at that facility, so that makes, that's a big, that's a good thing for the county, getting those off the side of the roads and the streets.
James, since we've expanded the recycling, is it part of the increases due to that, or can you tell?
Yes. Yeah, you're talking about the mixed recycling?
Right.
Yes, yeah, and I have some statistics on that, some, I think in a couple slides coming up. But, overall, for that year, 13% of the waste that came into the facility was recycled. This next year, that's, you're going to see that increase quite a bit, probably up to 30 or 40%.
The reason I'm saying that is because when we were over meeting with the EPA the other day, they really liked that. I mean, they, you know, when we, of course, they're all about, this is about air, they're talking about the non-attainment, but they, you know, when we can show them we're working in other areas, too, they know that we're trying to solve the problem, so, thank you for that.
You bet. The next slide, in fact, may help discuss that. From October of 2010 to May 2011, the facility accepted plastics only, and then, from June through the end of September for that fiscal year, we actually did the mixed recycling, which changed over, and we started taking plastics, paper, cardboard, and glass. So, and that's been a big success. The public really likes that at the facility. 50% of the total recycling for that year was taken into that facility in the last four months once we changed over. So, it gives you an idea of the response from the public. This is simply the fee schedule, I thought I would insert that for the public's view. This lists the recyclables as plastic, glass, cardboard and paper, iron, metal, and aluminum, white goods, which is all your appliances, used motor oil, oil filters and antifreeze, and vehicle batteries are all taken for free. We do take the first four passenger car tires free, and there's a small charge for anything over, after that. Larger tractor tires, there's a much larger charge because we have to pay for those, to get rid of, to get rid of them. That's just the continued fee schedule, it breaks it down according to general items. If somebody brings a single item to the facility, it's $5 for that item. If they bring it in a vehicle, if they have a number of items, then we charge according to the vehicle. Overall, the prices that we are charging for dumping at this facility is about at a 76% reduction over what you would pay at one of the ISI facilities, for example. That being said, I'm not dogging ISI, they are, in fact, our hauler, and they promote our facility, and they've done a good job. We, I mentioned earlier, we issue permits related to private swimming pools. This previous year, there were 15 permits issued at $200 a permit for revenue of $3,000. Floodplain development, we took in $700 in revenue. Floodplain development permits are $100 apiece. With the economy, that slowed this previous year. Things for the next fiscal year is FEMA is working on wrapping up the new flood maps, hopefully this fall. There was a delay from the previous year, and we're anticipating that that overall 100-year floodplain will be lowered through engineering by at least one foot, so that's going to help some people save on their flood insurance. And I have been answering a lot of questions related to the floodplain with individuals that are refinancing and trying to assist them getting through that process with FEMA. Also, private water well testing. We can test for and do test private water wells for bacteria, total coliform, and other inorganic compounds. We typically see these related to real estate transactions, as well as when Marty has his day, when he tests at a reduced cost. But, I want to let the public know that we can test their water wells, their private water wells, for bacteria for $90, and we'll come out to the site, collect those samples, and transport to the lab, and give them the results, and I encourage everybody to do that if you have a private water well, at least once a year. But, we can test for total coliform and E. coli, we can test for nitrogen, which consists of nitrites or nitrites, lead, or we can do a complete panel, which is the full chemistry panel and bacteria. Revenue from that year for water well testing was $1,130. And, any questions?
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James, good report.
Thank you.
Mary Burnett, county clerk.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I am really thrilled to be here this morning because I think that last year, our county clerk's office did an outstanding job of getting some things done. One of the things that I forgot to put in this report, and it's because I had reported it to you before, was that we got 66 of our old record books restored. They're beautiful, they've been used, Commissioner Simpson has used them, and we've been very pleased with the results. One of my goals when I took office, and also a campaign promise, was to get e-filing for courts into our office. We went online with texas.gov for e-filing for courts on Saturdays, July 23rd, and our first e-filing from an out-of-county attorney was Sunday, July 24th. Although it hasn't produced as much response as I would like, it is going up monthly, and the attorneys that are using it have expressed their appreciation.
Mary, do you think it's just because they don't know that they can do it, or is it...
No, I think it's because most of our things are filed in county. I think it's more a service that out-of-county attorneys use, and I think there's a lot of attorneys that are not yet on it. They're, they've not yet determined that they need to start doing it. A new goal was prompted when Stan McBroom, our auditor, sent me an email asking me about $900,000 worth of outstanding balances in our court. In my research, I found that many of those problems were caused from the conversion, when we converted to NetData in 1995. We have gone through every single case and cleaned up every single one of those problems. It took Dean and I about two months to go through all the cases. I'm happy to report, they are all clean and ready to go, and we have proceeded with a monthly check on those. Another ongoing project was the collections program. We are, now that we are required to have a collections program, we are diligently working on building a new, updating what we were doing in the past to get it up, and I believe we're going to be ready for the audit after April 1st, when we are required by law to have it in effect. We've also... We've also succeeded this year in getting our foreclosures online. I understand from Marlena that that's been something that's been very appreciated. Another goal I had when I took office was to give my staff more training. All my staff has been cross-trained in their coworkers' main responsibilities. Marlena accompanied me last year to the VG Young Institute School for County and District Clerks. Dean attended the legislative conference with me. And one of the things that we found out in these legislative conferences was that there were, there was some online training that I'm required to take that I felt would be extremely helpful to our staff. So my entire staff has completed a course in the Texas Public Information Act and gotten their certificates. Dean and Marlena, my management staff, have also taken a course in Texas Open Meetings and gotten their certificates for that. So I'm real proud of them for that. They, I think it gave them a lot of information that may have been spotty in the past and now they have it at hand. Dana Balles, my vitals records clerk, always goes to the vitals conference in December. And I am thrilled to report that for the fourth year, she has earned us the exemplary award from Vital Statistics. And I'd like Marlena and Dana to come up. And I'd like to read to you what, what the qualifications are for that. The criteria to get this award is timeliness, average less than 12 days for death registration entered into the Texas Electric Register from the date of the death of the filing in the state. Improvement, having filed better than the state average for all death records fully electronically in our registration district. Training, attend the 2010 Annual Conference. Timely electronic birth registration, register 95% of the birth records in record acceptance queue within one business day of receiving it. And management registration to complete the online self-assessment survey. Dana is the main force behind this, although the entire staff deserves that.
Let's get a picture of that, ain't we? Yeah, good.
You got it upside down. No, no, look back in here.
No, you get, it's coming to you.
You're short, you get in the middle.
All right. Keep going. Mary, why was she, when you were about to call her up, she was...
She doesn't like to have her picture taken.
Ah.
She only likes to have her picture taken when she's in Austin and we have a representative from Austin named Victor and she gets, she makes sure she gets a picture with Victor Thank you. Now I would like to go to our statistics. Last 2011 fiscal year, the birth records processed in our office was 526. The death records processed were 473 and the marriage license returned were 353. Indeed records, we had 16,063 records filed. Our new civil cases amounted to 307 and we disposed of 312. Our new probate cases were 209. Our new guardianships that were filed were 22. And we transferred approximately 16 guardianships out of state, or out of county. And we had 13 new mental cases. The criminal case stats, and I'm, they are broken down by offense and I'm just going to highlight a couple of those. We had 39 assaults causing bodily injury to a family member. We had 54 theft of property, over 50, under 500. We had 151 possession of marijuana under two ounces. We had, I'm just looking for some of the larger ones. We had 162 driving while intoxicated and 51 driving while intoxicated second offenses. We had 177 cases of driving with an invalid license. And we had 68 cases that were reduced to a Class C misdemeanor. Total new cases, criminal cases filed was 1,016. Total motions to revoke filed were 212. We disposed of 1,298 cases. We had 43 juvenile cases and numerous juvenile hearings. Since we don't get paperwork on juvenile hearings, detention hearings, I didn't have an exact number. I'm going to read only, if you'll notice, I've got the money collected by our office for each individual. I'm only going to read what stayed in the county. Criminal cases, $400,963.66 was revenue to the county. Civil cases, $48,385.82 was revenue to the county. Probate cases, $50,887.05 was revenue to the county. Vital Statistics, $49,659.61 was revenue to the county. Indeed records, $485,643.71 was revenue for the county. We had a total, grand total for the county in our office of $1,035,839.85. And I hope that gives everybody a clear picture of where the County Clerk's Office stands. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Does anybody have any questions for Mary? Very good report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Did you see Larry yesterday, by the way?
No, I'll see him later next week.
Oh, okay.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to be here and address you and talk to the citizens of Hood County. Rather than doing a year-end review, I'd like to focus on one event that recently occurred here in Hood County. And that would be our 2012 Hood County Junior Livestock Show that took place a couple of weekends ago out at the fairgrounds. In my mind and in the minds of those kids that participated in that event, it's one of the premier events that takes place each year in Hood County in terms of youth development. This year, we had a very strong and successful show and that is due to the support of the individuals, the businesses in the community, the volunteers who get behind that show and make it a success. To share some, some information about the show, there's over 300 youth throughout Hood County that participate in some way in that county stock show, which also has a family living division, an ag mechanics division, which those kids make items to exhibit. So it's not all just about showing animals. Now, one of the highlights of the event is our premium sale. When we look at the show, it is a competition. Those kids are competing, learning that life lesson. At the end of that, the top 50% in most of those classes will make the sale. So it's not every kid is going to get there and so that's something they strive to do. This year, we sold 217 sale lots and approximately $255,000 was contributed by the citizens and the businesses in Hood County and some of the surrounding counties to help out these, these youth. Now, in my mind, that's a very strong testament to the support and the value that these businesses and individuals place on our 4H and FFA youth development programs in the county. As far as the 4H program that I work with and our volunteers work with goes, we had 89 4Hers that competed in some way at the county show. Thirty-seven of those 4Hers competed in the family living division, which had a record over 600 items entered this year. We also had three 4Hers that competed in our ag mechanics division. And most of the ag mechanic stuff is exhibited by our FFA groups that they make there in their shops. It's trailers and barbecue pits, but we've now started getting some of our 4Hers involved and making some of the smaller items. One of our 4Hers made a gun rack that he and his dad took a log they found on the side of the road and worked that and made it into a gun rack. One of my 4Hers, and I'll talk about him a little bit later, out of necessity, developed with him and his dad, an automatic livestock feeder. Because of his schedule and where he keeps his animals and his school schedule, he can't feed those animals on a regular basis. And so he come up with a way that he made an automatic feeder that he could set a timer to and would dump that feed to make sure his animals were fed precisely. And then he entered that in the show. A little bit more about the county show. It's not just all about showing animals and livestock. We also have our 4H pancake breakfast, which we fed over 250 people. That the meal was served by the parents, the leaders, the 4Hers, as well as support from our locals Lions Club, which helps us out with the pancakes. And this event brought people out to the showgrounds to see what the kids were doing and also helped raise approximately $1,800, which will help us later on in the year with some of our other 4H projects. One of the neat events that's only been going on a handful of years is our steak lunch that we have that Saturday before the premium sale. This year, we fed 657 people from the community. Once again, it's an effort to get those people out to the show. Our 4Hers helped contribute to that by helping getting food ready, carrying things back and forth, setting up tables, carrying plates for some of those needy people that needed assistance. The livestock raisers also gives an award for the top two ticket sellers. And I'm proud to say that both of those top two were 4H members. They got out there and promoted the event and sold those tickets. We had over a dozen 4H parents and leaders that helped in serving and cooking that meal. And so the stock show is more about than just showing the animal. It's also getting those kids out there, working to help put on an event. This year, we did something new. All the FFA groups and the 4H groups were assigned different parts of the fairgrounds that they were responsible for, for keeping clean. So throughout the day, I grabbed trash bags, grabbed 4Hers and say, "Hey, I need y'all to go pick up trash." Never once did I have one of them tell me no. They all took the trash bags and went out there and picked up trash. And so it's about leadership development. It's about developing citizens through this project. A little bit about the finances of these livestock projects. And everybody sees what the grand champion steer brings and the grand champion hog brings. And yes, those kiddos do very well and that's thank you to the businesses for doing that. But these animals, as in all of agriculture, if you break even on a year, you had a good year. And these are some rough numbers. A lot of it's going to vary on what those kiddos are able to purchase these animals for. But for a 4H or FFA member to get one sheep or goat bought, fed and to the show, they're going to expend roughly around $500 to buy that animal, to feed it and take care of it for four to seven months. On our pigs, you're looking at $500 to $700 to buy those pigs, feed them. A bag of feed for these show animals runs you about $25 a bag. Sheep and goats will eat two to three pounds a day. Pigs can eat four to six pounds a day. On our cattle, obviously a bigger animal eats more feed. You're looking at somewhere three to four to $5,000 for one animal to get it to the show. And so these kids have a significant financial investment and it's nice to see our businesses support them through the sale. And I want to spend just a little bit of time and talk about a couple of our 4Hers and just share the experiences and get away from the competition aspect, but talk a little bit about the life lessons. Mentioned Sam Spradlin, one of my 4Hers been with us for several years. Sam's truly a unique individual. When I first started working with Sam, he was showing goats and sheep. He kept his animals out where the neighbors had some cattle. Sam was scared to death to go in the pen with a steer or heifer. Matter of fact, one of his first years, he showed a heifer. And when I went out there to make a project visit, Sam was very shy and very timid and it was a struggle to get him in there to catch that heifer. That's how nervous he was around those big animals. Sam's been showing for four or five years and the last three years, he's been showing a steer. And so he's overcome that fear, he's gained that confidence. Sam also is an individual that I told you developed that sheep feeder out of necessity and has built that. And so he's learned something about building things. The other thing Sam does is he has a small flock of South Down ewes. So not only is he showing sheep, he raises some of the sheep he shows and buys some of the other. So he's learning about some productions, things. Sam also does some of our educational presentation activities and talks about sheep production. So Sam's one of those individuals that, in my mind, takes full advantage of not only the competition of the county stock show, but the learning environment in which it creates to build better citizens. Now, I want to step aside a little bit and kind of talk from a personal standpoint about our next individual. You can ask any of the Commissioners, anybody that's around me much, they know how much I believe in this program. But my son was a first-year 4Her this year. And so now I got to witness it from a parent's standpoint. And now I'm even that much more committed to the program. I've watched my son, day in and day out, go out there, weigh his feed. We weigh our feed for our animals. They're fed at 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 at night, on a consistent daily basis. He is even more, to use a, he's more picky about weighing the feed than I am. And, you know, that, that shows that he cares about those animals and these kids develop a relationship with these animals. They care about what they're doing. And in my mind, we're teaching these individuals possibly how to be a parent someday. They're caring for something other than themselves. I've seen his confidence grow from being scared to death the first time he goes, went in the ring, to where now he knows what he's doing, he's confident about it. He's not scared to get in there in front of a bunch of people. If you go out to the county stock show, there's a lot of eyes focused on you when you're in the ring. And so you develop that confidence. And these are just a handful of the things that these 4H and FFA members learn through our county stock show, through the, through the process. And I want to take this time to publicly thank, once again, the businesses, the individuals who make this event happen. It's, in my mind, one of the best events that gets a ton of kids out there in a positive learning environment. I know several of the Commissioners and other people in the room have been out there and involved in that event. And from, on behalf of the 4H program and our 4H members and leaders, want to thank those people for making that a successful event. At this time, I'll answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Marty. You do a good job.
Judge, Commissioners, come before you today to talk a little bit about statistics. Now that we're into January, starting of a new year, and unfortunately, it's been a busy year already, but last year's what I'm here to talk about. Last year, the statistics for the major index crimes that are normally recorded for the feds and the state and all that, it's murder, last year we had one, the year before we had one. Forcible rape, last year we had eight, this year we, the year before we had eight. Robberies, last year we had zero, but, and then a year before, we had five. So that's a good thing, but now we're starting off not too good this year. Assaults, 436 were in 2011. Assaults, 436 were in 2011, and then the previous year, 376, so that has come up a little bit. Burglaries, 168, and the year before, 2,000, or 202, so that has come down. Thefts, 375, and the year before were 443, so that's came down. Motor vehicle thefts, 27. Major crimes, 156. Drug crimes. And so the total in major crimes were 1,171. A lot of those statistics that the county clerk had gave you on the incoming fines and revenue and restitution, a lot of that started with my office, with my patrol guys going out there and taking the initial reports on a lot of those crimes. She talked about the misdemeanors. We also deal with all the felonies out there. So there's a lot of stuff going on in Hood County. Child abuse cases in 2011, this is always a hot topic every year, and a lot of people around the county are working hard to try to get that number to go down. But in 2011, we had 406, and that was down from 2010. We had 508. A lot of the other statistics that I have, like, we patrolled a total of 841,158 miles, so in 2011, at a cost of $522,143.37. But we have to get out there, protect the people, watch over the neighborhoods, the subdivisions, and then respond to those calls when needed. We had $42,222 worth of repairs to those vehicles, and that is down because thankfully you guys have helped me to get those newer vehicles out there and replace those older vehicles. But now these vehicles are getting a lot of miles, so probably in the coming months, we'll be needing to talk about that. Patrol calls for service in 2011 were 76,076. So that's, we only got 365 days a year, but we run 24/7, so that's a bunch of calls. Animal control, we also have, and calls reported there into dispatch were 13,947. And talking about dispatch, that's where everything starts. You make a 911 call or an non-emergency call. It all comes into my dispatch center. Dispatch received of 911 calls, just strictly 911, 24,554 calls in 2011. But then last year, it was way up. We had, total calls into dispatch were 67,544. So, you know, they're answering the phone a whole lot, and it was like 54,000 the year before. So I know the economy is still not what it should be, and it doesn't appear that lots going on in Hood County, but we're definitely getting busier and busier than we ever have been. We sent out 92,98 teletypes, sent in and received in 2011. One of my big responsibilities as sheriff is to protect the citizens of the county, but also to take care of the jail and the inmates. Average population was between 122 and 149 during the year, and we served 187,932 meals, and the costs were ranging from a buck 24 at the lowest to a dollar 68. And a lot of that varies on when an order is placed and when a bill comes in, so, but I think we're doing pretty good. We also have a reserve staff under me, and this last year, we had a total of 16 reserves. Some are there, some have moved on to be, to work other jobs, and then some I have put into patrol and are paid employees now, so these... But it was a total of 16 reserves that worked for 1,906 total hours. And if you figure that out by the regular going rate of what we pay a deputy, that's over $30,000 worth of service to the county, so that helps. That's volunteer service that we get. And if you figure a benefit into that from a paid employee with a benefit package, it's probably closer to $60,000 saved. As far as the jail, we made 2,522 arrests just by my office alone last year, and 299 were on-view arrests, witnessed, right there on scene, so we are definitely busy. I didn't bring any pictures for you because definitely mine would be way too graphic, so... Last month, I went to a council of government meeting that is all about dispatch, 911 dispatching, and I didn't realize this, but there's, I believe, 44 Public Safety Answering Points, is what they call them, throughout the North Central Texas COG region, and we're one of them. And we are busier, Hood County Sheriff's Office is busier than Wise County SO, Navarro County SO, Rockwall County SO, Palapeno County SO, Somerville County SO. We're one of the top in there. There is, Ellis County SO is just the next step up from us in how busy they are, and then Hunt County, Johnson County, Parker County, Kaufman County, and Collin County. But for this small size county, we are definitely very, very busy, and probably will continue to do that as the economy improves and things continue to keep on growing in the county.
Yeah, but Roger, Ellis County is about three times our size, too, so...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, and they're really, the way they rate here, that's not, they're just the next step above us. The calls were from 190... Let's see, 23,715 calls recorded through this system, and they had 31,000, so it's pretty close. So for that big of a county, it's surprising that we're not that much behind them. But anyway, thank you for your time. Just wanted to report those statistics to you.
Does anybody have any comments from Roger or questions? Well, thank you very much, Roger. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is discuss changes to the outdoor signage at Annex Two and Take Appropriate Action. Jackie, do you have some video?
Judge and Commissioners, as you can see these signs, you'll notice on the top sign, at the very bottom of the sign, it says "Staff and County Vehicle Parking Only." The next sign, which is on the side of the building, says "Parking for Official County Business Only, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday." Now, to us, those signs make sense, but to the public, they do not make sense. I would like to get them changed. There is also a sign that I don't have a picture of there. It's on the back fence, and it says "County Vehicle Parking Only." One of the things that's happening is that, and I think a lot of it is because the square has been blocked off, but one of the things that happens is that our office down there stays open through lunch. Our girls take shift lunches. One of the things that's happening is they come back from lunch, and there's other county employees parked in there, and they've gone over to Bab's to eat lunch. We would like to get that sign changed to say Annex Two Employee Parking. And take the stat, on the big sign, take the Staff and County Vehicle Only parking off of there, because it indicates people walk in the office and they're confused. They don't know where they're supposed to park. They, for some reason, do not understand that their business, no matter what they're coming into the county clerk's office for, is official business. And I would like to see those changed. I would like to see that sign changed to say Annex Customer Parking Only, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And I am asking for your approval to have those signs changed.
All right. Do I have any...
Judge, I would recommend we table this to our next meeting, and in that period of time, we do an assessment of the parking, assessment of how many county vehicles we actually have parked there, county-owned vehicles, county employee vehicles, and assess the needs of what we really need. I do know that, from experience, that between 11 and 1, that parking lot handles a lot of chicken traffic, fried chicken traffic, so... But I think we need to do an assessment of what our vehicle status is in terms of county vehicle, what our employee status is, and come back with a recommendation to make it easier for the public and allow some public parking spaces.
Okay. You make it out in motion?
That is a motion.
I second it. Okay. Have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Berry to table this till we can make an assessment on this. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mary. Constable, Precinct Four?
Judge, Commissioners, brought to your attention that we're moving in the courthouse trying to get all those things situated. One of the problems we have is the room that we're in, and the state's telling us that we have to have the floors what they call original, which is concrete. The office area that we're in has almost about two-and-a-half-foot-thick walls that are rock and concrete, along with the steel and concrete ceiling. The sound echoes 10 times worse than what it's doing inside this room here. The one thing is, I have an employee that has two hearing aids, and when we're in there, he's, it's real nerve-wracking on him. By putting the rugs in there, it'll soften the sound down. I know that we put the furniture in. When the furniture came in, it had reduced it quite a bit. I feel that with the rugs, it would help out a lot in our office area. Those rugs are at a cost of $380 originally, or normal cost, and we're getting them at a reduced price of, I believe, it was $180. And I was asking for y'all's support and y'all's approval on that.
Okay. Does anybody have any... Do I have a motion to approve this purchase?
How many, you get four, is that what you said?
Four, sir. Yes, sir. It'll still leave room on the edges and on the glass door areas where you can see the original flooring that they're calling, which is the new concrete that was put down.
Wouldn't this be a supply item? Four and 180, 720 out of Fund 55 is what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
I think we should see if this works before we open the floodgates for Fund 55. As you can see today, we've got about seven or eight requests for Fund 55.
Yes, sir.
So what's your suggestions, Steve?
How thick are these rugs?
These rugs, these are the high-quality rugs that do not roll up. They're thick. They are meant to last. These are not some thin sheep rugs that in two years, we want a hole in them. These rugs will last us, I'm told, for at least 10 to 20 years.
What size are they?
These are eight-and-a-half, they're called eight-by-elevens, which normally the rugs run about seven foot, eight inches by 10-and-a-half foot. Seven, seven foot by, seven-and-a-half foot by 10-and-a-half foot usually. They call them eight-by-elevens.
With the state's requirements, what difference is that going to be compared to hanging something on the wall in the hallway?
I don't know. I haven't heard from them in so long. I don't know.
I guarantee you, this is a way to hear from them.
Yeah.
Because you're going to end up with rugs in every room in the building if this flies.
I know every office does echo that, and they really do.
This room, and rugs would help. So it's seat cushions.
Yeah.
My question is, do you think that the vendor would allow us to put those rugs down and see if that alters the sound before we purchase them? Or a similar rug? Or, I'm looking for a...
A trial run?
Exactly.
I have no idea. I know that we could go through it and say, "Look, if it works, they're going, you know, they'll pay it. If not, they don't want to pay it." But I don't, I don't know. I don't know many vendors that would do that.
Where are you getting these rugs from?
His name is Arnold Morris. He owns a company called Any Flag, and he does this all over the state, selling rugs. He's been a rug vendor for many, many years.
Put the crescent there. Yeah, they got crescent. You gonna run, you gonna run your chairs on these rugs?
I have the chair mats that we have currently, so we don't damage those rugs and tear those up. We have the mats to go with us when we move. We'll take the ones that we currently have, so that we don't tear up the rugs we're buying.
What about purchasing? Are we legal with purchasing? Are we legal with purchasing?
Be okay?
He negotiated his own price. You're good with that? Everything's good? So you're good with it, is my question? Motion approved.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hetherton. Any further discussion?
I'd like to try these before we just start buying rugs. It look like a magic carpet around here.
Yep. You're opening the floodgates here.
Okay. Any other discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners and Judge.
Now, but you're still up, considering Take Appropriate Action Regarding Replacement of Three Computers from JP Technology Fund. Constable Four?
Judge, Commissioners, one of the computers currently used by our office was one that was Precinct One and Two when Bill Haynes was here, that Judge Castillo purchased. Judge Castillo has told us to continue using that computer when we moved on the truancy program. Deputy Hatfield, we can utilize that, so we do not have to purchase a third one. On the other two systems, whenever the sheriff's office had all of their systems replaced approximately seven years ago, some of the older systems that they had are two of them that we currently have that were put in our office. Speaking with Judge Castillo, he has agreed to purchase these two computers to replace those, and the quotes have been submitted, and it's gone through IT for a total of $2,103.
How much?
$2,103 out of the JP Technology Fund. Also, this doesn't come out of Fund 55 and leaves that alone. This is alternate funding that JP's have, the ability to use to, for technology that they feel benefits their office. We handle their courts, we handle all their warrants and cases, so they feel it's a benefit, and we're grateful for them allowing us to do this for us.
Is all coming out of One and Two?
Yes, sir.
I thought you told me you had some coming from Four.
Nothing was submitted from that one to IT or to purchasing, and Judge Castillo said he would take care of that.
Why is that? You're a constable for Four.
It was not submitted to, it wasn't faxed over, sir, is all I know. Sir?
I committed to one, the other.
Yes, sir. Judge Tugle did commit to one, and he had asked his clerk to fax it over, but IT or purchasing had told me that they had not received anything as of Friday at 5:00. So Judge Tugle is willing to split that and pay for one out of his technology fund and one out of Judge Castillo's.
I'll make the motion based on the fact that one comes out of One and Two and one comes out of Four.
Okay. I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry and seconded by Commissioner Hetherton to approve the purchase of two computers. Is that right, Chad?
Yes, sir.
Two computers, one to be paid out of the technology fund from JP Four and the other out of JP One and Two. Is there any further discussion on that? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Last item is considering Take Appropriate Action Regarding Replacement of Bulletproof vests, and I believe that's been going to be tabled.
I asked that to be pulled. Yes, sir.
Yeah, to pull it till April. Okay. Thank you very much, Chad.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Considering Take Appropriate Action to Approve Qualifications Award Suggested Suggestion on RFQ 2011-2017 Enterprise Plan Recreation Facility Operator to Suggest the Commissioners Court to Move Forward in Negotiating a Contract.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. As you well know, we issued a request for qualifications back in November, I believe. It closed in December. We only had one respondent. The respondent was the YMCA of Metropolitan Fort Worth. The evaluation team went over the criteria for grading their qualifications and determined that they meet the qualifications needed to move forward with negotiations of a contract for operation of a facility. This facility would be built by Hood County in the event that is approved by and passed by Hood County taxpayers. So it's our suggestion to you that you contact the Metropolitan YMCA of Fort Worth and start negotiations with them. I believe you should all have packets I sent last week of what was submitted to us.
We do have the packets now. I think, I still have the feeling we're getting the cart before the horse.
I'm sorry. I can barely hear you.
I still have the feeling that we are getting the cart before the horse here.
I understand. I understand.
We, it's difficult in my mind to negotiate an operating contract for a building that is not yet designed, or a piece of property that's not yet acquired. We don't know the square footage, we don't know what the financing is going to be. Strikes me that until after that commitment is made by the taxpayer, we're wasting our time on getting a contract, because it'll have to be changed to match whatever that facility becomes, if indeed it becomes anything. So I think we're way ahead of the curve here. It would be different if the YMCA was in the, in the business of investing in this with us, but they are not. They do not invest, at least this region does not invest in land or buildings, and as a result, that monkey falls solely on the back of the taxpayer, which means that all we're looking for is an operator after it is built. I think we're way, way early on negotiating any kind of an operating contract. Just my opinion. You guys are free to give yours.
Well, the way that I read this, this is just to approve their qualifications, right?
That's correct.
So it's not, we're not letting a contract?
No.
Well, my question to you, Commissioner, is, I mean, they asked to be put on the ballot, and we didn't, because we had, we didn't want a pie in the sky dream. So she's only doing what we asked her to do.
And I agree with that, and as long as we can define what it is we're going to put on the ballot, then we can move forward.
Well, I don't think any of the five of us wanted a $25 million complex, so that's why we scaled it down. We had a pie in the sky dream that we can't afford.
That's exactly right.
So I don't understand...
Not a financial partner, we can't...
I don't understand why you, what your resistance is this morning. I don't understand that.
Just gave you my thoughts. Don't need to repeat them. But you're still, we're still free to do as you please. If you want to, if you want to vote on their, their qualifications, we can do that. There's certainly no question there.
That's what the...
That's what the agenda item is.
Yeah, that's what the agenda item is.
I mean, I thought the whole idea was to find someone that would partner and help sell the plan, if this is what we, this court with the exception of the judge, allowed them to even put on the ballot, because they brought a petition forward. If this is not going to ever happen, then we need to quit leading them along like a horse to water.
I, I still believe that it will happen. That wasn't my point. My point was, this says to move forward in negotiation of a contract. I am not going to, going to approve anything even resembling a contract until we have something passed that's going to become real. And I don't think any of you would either. Because what if it, what if you negotiate a contract, and then it, it doesn't pass on a ballot? What do you do then? What do you do with that contract that you've agreed to?
The whole idea was to make sure we didn't build a facility like the Justice Center that the taxpayers and the burden fell on them when it couldn't be operated.
Right.
Tony Schuman, when he met with myself and the judge, didn't want an 80,000 square foot complex. He wanted something that was more reasonable, that they could put heads in there and fill it up, and they could use it. And that's all that she's done here, but somebody needs to take the ball and go ahead and go with this. And I believe you started that with your, with your group that you went and visited with, you and another gentleman that resigned off the YMCA board to go forward, and it's kind of, it's died.
Yeah, that, I've not heard anything from that group for, for months.
I'll accept a motion to approve the qualifications for the YMCA, Metropolitan YMCA of Fort Worth, as in response to RFQ 2011, 2011-017.
And that is to approve?
Their qualifications.
Their qualifications only.
So moved.
Second. Because we need to move forward and allow them to either put this on the ballot and let the taxpayers know what this is going to cost, and it need to be voted for by the taxpayers to be funded or be defeated. Well, we need to either go forward so that this, you know, the group that wants to go forward with this can have the right way to work with it. And Tony, the YMCA of Greater Metropolitan needs to be negotiated with. They need to be talked about what size building they're looking for. So it's not a pie in the sky dream.
All right, I have that motion made by Commissioner Berry, Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to approve the qualifications of the Metropolitan YMCA of Fort Worth for, in response to RFQ 2011-017 Enterprise Plan Recreation Facility Operator. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carried. Thank y'all very much. Now, item number five is, this is to allow Boys and Girls Club of Fort Worth one free dump a month. I believe Commissioner, Precinct Four, has that?
Boys and Girls Club, judge is, in court is moving this week, and I believe Jeff Bates and Brenda Hyde are here to represent Boys and Girls Club. What they've done in the past is they're dumping about once a month, times six months, and at the same time, we've allowed 1501(c)(3), which is People Helping People, the opportunity to dump one free time. That's what Brenda approached me last week, or two weeks ago, when I was involved in the stock show, and asked her to put it off to this court. They're asking just to be able to go out and take large furniture and mattresses. What I would request is if they do this, we do it on a letterhead, officially a letterhead, signed by the executive director, and they allowed one free dump a month. And James McCoslin's asked, because People Helping People are doing it the second Saturday, that we do it at least the third or fourth Saturday, not to fill up our dumpsters. Would y'all like to respond, or?
Thank you for your time. I was going to say hello, and I'm Jeff Bates, Executive Director of Boys and Girls Club, Brenda Hyde on the board with the board with the Boys and Girls Club, and you said it, what he said.
Motion to approve their request.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Hetherton. James, do you want to just say anything, or? I saw you stand up, buddy.
Yeah, the facility is really quite busy on Saturdays. I was hoping that maybe that could be on the third or fourth Monday.
We can work it out, whatever. Third or fourth Monday.
That work out better?
Works for me. I'll write it down.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Hetherton, to allow one free dump a month to Boys and Girls Club for the third Monday, is that?
Third or fourth, I think.
Third or fourth Monday?
Just let them, I just, not, just let them work it out with...
Work it out, okay.
Environment.
Is there any further discussion? Then all?
Well, he's been bringing a flatbed trailer, $35 is what they've been paying in the last six months. So a $25 or $35 jump is what they're asking for once a month at the most.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried.
Thanks for your time.
Thank y'all very much for coming. Sheriff, we have considering take appropriate action to accept sheriff's racial profiling report to the state.
Judge Commissioners, in the last few years, it's been required from the state of Texas that we report our racial profiling, and this is not an issue in Hood County, but I can see where it might be in Dallas or Fort Worth. So our total, total number of motor vehicles stopped were 655. The racial or ethnicity from those 655 stops, we had six African, five Asian, 588 Caucasian, so we're not, they're not, they can't get us for saying we're racially profiling. 54 Hispanics, zero Middle Eastern, and two Native American. Racer ethnicity known prior to the stop, zero. Didn't know until after they were stopped, so that's 655. Searches conducted, out of those stops that were made, nine searches were conducted, but 646 were not. Was a search consented to, and nine were consented to, so all of those searches that were conducted were consented to. And that is basically it for my racial profiling report. This has to go in on the internet. It's a very simple process, so there's not much to it. So we'll just hit the send button today if you approve it.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson to accept, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Roger. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Considering take appropriate action on request for Fund 55 to alternate funding for two police office chairs, or, I guess they're police, sheriff's office chairs.
Yeah, it's for office chairs, two of them up there that are basically broken and are unusable, or unsafe to use. It's probably safer to ride a buck and bull than it is those, but, so I had requested on the, to put the request in for about $300 each, but I have a quote from Martin's Office Supply. For one chair is $179, and the other one is $189. So definitely way cheaper than I first requested on the, on the agenda item. So I have requested this time that you approve that out of Fund 55 or whatever other fund you might think.
Go move. And we remind the court, we did take all of the small equipment items out of everyone's budgets. That's why we're seeing these small items come back to us.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Simpson, to approve the purchase of two office chairs from Fund 55, to be purchased from Martin's, one at 170, one at 180. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank y'all very much. Considering take appropriate action on a request from Fund 55 for alternate funding for scanner for 9/11 addressing.
Yeah, that, we have a number of scanners in the office, but it seems like that definitely saves us a lot of time and troubles with being able to scan information in and getting into the computer system. And the 9/11 person, Cindy, would like to have her own scanner in there, and I can definitely see an advantage with that. And so the quotes, Rhonda got two quotes, and both quotes were under $500. And the best one is 496.53 plus warranty and shipping. And then we did send you that per an email, all the, it's a Scan Snap S1500 is what they came up with for the quality of what we need to do, and that'll last and serve the purpose. So I ask that you approve this, and looks like I need to request it out of Fund 55 also.
Jackie, what do you think about this? Okay. So I have a motion to, and a second, to approve the purchase of this scanner for 911 addressing out of Fund 55?
Go move. Second.
Oh, excuse me, plus warranty and shipping. I'm sorry, 496.53 plus warranty and shipping. No, not exactly. Do I need to find that out before this is?
You're talking to the microphone. We can't hear you.
Okay, well, I can come back to the next court. I didn't bring that information.
My question to him was if that included warranty and shipping, but it does not, that fine, that price he gave you. So it's going to be an escalated amount. I always have to keep the minutes from these meetings to know what was approved from Fund 55. So I wanted to get a figure of what is actually approved. But he doesn't, I don't think he has that figure with him.
Can we approve it based upon him getting those figures to you within 24 hours?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan to approve the purchase of the scanner for 9111 addressing out of Fund 55 for 496.53 warranty and shipping extra, and that number will come. Do I have a second? Seconded, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Considering take appropriate action on request for desk mats come out of Fund 55 for the Justice of the Peace JP Four. Now, these, I know these desk mats are for the floor, protection of the floor. I know the, I'll, I'll let you talk. I've already talked to you before, but...
Judge Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We've priced the mats to go under our desk. It's to protect the historic floor. We're trying to do everything we can to make sure we're not tearing up something that, you know, has been well preserved. So we, the mats that we've got are for rugs. They are ending up, they're start grinding a hole. Everywhere there's a little bump, it'll start grinding a hole in that floor. And in my office, I don't have a mat at all, and it's, some of the floor is starting to splinter, on those ridges of the boards. I, I talked to Martin's Office Supply, they came in and measured it, I believe. They got the information too. Nelda, I think the price on these is going to be around $90 apiece for four of them. That's what we're requesting, and it's the court's pleasure. If you get any questions, I'll be glad to answer anything I can.
Personally seen these?
Second.
Get that microphone.
I have not seen the bids yet, so...
I know we got some more too, on the, on the next item. You want to check into that, and we, we'll table those, or? Is that right? I personally don't want them. I mean, seriously, because they, but it's Danny said, it's splintering the floors, and every time you roll those rollers over, you know, each one of those boards, the edge of it, it, you know, it's, it's really hard on that floor.
I'm sure that Martin's just neglected to send it to me, but I just haven't seen it myself yet.
So...
What do we do, approve?
I can get that to you today.
I have a motion to approve based on that Martin's getting back?
Correct, 24 hour.
Do you have a, is that, you making a motion, Commissioner Simpson?
Correct, 24 hour approval.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson. Have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hetherton to approve this, purchasing four desk floor mats for, to go under the chair to protect the historic wood floors. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carried. The next item is to, is to, is the same thing, except there's a purchase of the keyboard trays, and what this is, is a tray that fits, I'm sorry, fits under the desk so that people won't have to type, you know, up like this. And right now, I'm getting complaints about their carpal tunnel and things like that, and if you don't do it, we're going, I'm hearing carpal tunnel talk and things like that. Bob, you had anything to add to that? Pardon me?
From an ADA standpoint, I think we need to go ahead and do that.
So we're going to do them on everybody's desk now, when we open the floodgates here?
Very well could happen.
Why didn't we order the desk?
Isn't this a supply item?
You, I don't know. You know, I don't know why the desk didn't come with them. I can't answer that. I would have thought that they would, but they didn't.
Any chance of just hiring taller people?
Hire taller people? I guess we could do that.
What's the price?
I think the trays, Mike, you, we talked about this yesterday, or?
65, I believe.
Each?
Right in there, 155, 65 each.
Times what?
The quote that I received from your office was $109 each.
$109 each?
Yes.
For the keyboards?
We're saving money.
Did you, did you get some for the mats too?
I, this was from your office, I have no idea.
But no mats?
No.
And how many of these are we going to have to buy?
Two. Motion to approve.
About the rest of the building?
But these are just for the brand-new desk?
As needed.
It's not worth talking about.
Second. All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Hetherton, to approve, and I presume we're going to do the same thing on the mats. Nelda, is that right, waiting on the, some more information from Martin's?
I, I don't have anything from your office.
She's, they're asking for mats too?
I don't see none on here.
No.
Oh, good. Then that's, okay. Then, then we don't have to worry about that. So I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Hetherton, to approve the purchase of keyboard trays from Fund 55 for two for $109 each. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider take appropriate action to approve Peggy Jackson, is member of the Hood County Child Welfare Board. Commissioner Hetherton, do you want to discuss that?
I talked to Frances Squires, the president of the Hood County Child Welfare Board, and they have done a background check on this lady, and...
they have done a background check on this lady, and they would like her to be on their new board. So I make a motion that we go ahead and approve Peggy Jackson as a welfare board member.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Hetherton, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to approve Peggy Jackson as a member of the Hood County Child Welfare Board. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. We are now adjourned, it is 10:30 a.m.